All right, here we go. So, good evening, everyone. This is just for clarification on the, it sounds like we're having some audio problems here, but we're gonna make this work this evening. For recording purposes, please speak clearly into the microphone. To use the microphone device, press and hold, so please press and hold, the on button found in the center of the device. And prior to speaking, then select the same button to turn the audio device off. So make sure that you hold the device to turn it off, right? Please share the audio, please share the audio devices. Also, the recording purposes, if you wish to address the planning commission, please fill out a yellow speaker card found in the podium and place it in the box at the podium. Make sure to state your name before speaking, you're limited to three minutes. Okay? So we'll get started here. We'll make a motion to excuse any absent planning commissioners. If any, we have two planning commissioners absent this evening. Sorry, three, you're right, three. So we'll make a motion to excuse them.
Chair. Would you like me to take real call?
Please.
Acosta?
Present.
Dodge? Raden? Rojas? Sension?
Here.
Meldaw?
Here.
Beach Olson?
Here.
We have quorum.
We make a motion to excuse.
Yes, motion to excuse.
A motion to excuse commissioners? Not here today.
I'll second.
So we're making a motion to excuse three commissioners, right, this evening? Okay, perfect, all right.
Acosta?
Yes.
Sension?
Yes.
Meldaw?
Yes.
Beach Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, perfect, thank you. All right, at this time, we'll pledge allegiance. All right, at this time, we'll make the presentation for oral communication. At this time, we'll set aside for members of the general public to address the planning commission on any items not on the agenda, which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission. No action, item, or discussion shall be taken on any items present, except that any commissioners may respond to any statements or questions asked, or may ask questions for clarification. All matters relating to planning commission will be noted in the minutes and may be subject for a discussion at a future meeting or referred to staff for clarification and report. Any commissioners may, these matters brought up under oral communication on a future agenda, all speakers are asked to announce their name in order to obtain an accurate record for the minutes. So at this time, I'd like to open up for any oral communication from the public, and we allow three minutes. Do we have any oral communication from the public? All right, see none. We'll move to any oral communication from the commissioners. Nope. Okay. So, let's move on. Motion approving minutes for September 3rd, 2024. We have a motion to move to approve the minutes.
I abstained because I wasn't present for that.
Okay. I'll make motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
So we have a first and a second, is that what I heard? And a...
We have a motion and a second?
Motion and a second. I will take any public comment on this. All right, see none?
All right. Real call? Acosta?
Yes.
Sension?
Yes.
Meldaw?
I'm abstaining.
Abstaining. Beach Olson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, so we'll move to a special use permit for environmental review. PP 2024-7477 to allow new telecommunications facility located at 1200 Menasco Drive, APN 01755110, and finding project categorically exempt pursuant to SEQA Guidelines 153003. Stop report.
Good evening, planning commissioners and residents of Watsonville. My name is Ivan Carmona, Associate Planner for the Community Development Department. And tonight, I'll be presenting the special use permit with environmental review for construction of a new telecommunication facility located at 1200 Menasco Drive. Tonight's presentation, we will review the project location briefly for the project, discuss the Communications Act of 1996, as well as the municipal code standards for telecommunication uses. Briefly review some conditions, and we'll end with findings for the project. On this slide, you see the sub-property. It is located at 1200 Menasco Drive. It has a general plan land use designation of residential load density, and is within the public facility zoning district of a planned development. This area of the city also known as the Vista Mondañas Division. This is also known as Frannish Park. Frannish Park has playgrounds, volleyball court, basketball court, three baseball fields, and dog parks. To the north is single-family residential development, as well as to the east, to the south is Anso do Elementary, and to the west is multifamily residential development. Brief background for this project. This project came to planning commission back in 2014. At that time, the applicant AT&amp;T requested a telecommunications facility in another area of the park. At that time, planning commission requested to have neighborhood meetings, those neighborhood meetings, AT&amp;T withdrew the application. Here we are again, about 10 years later, with this new applicant who is T-Mobile. The Watsonville Municipal Code requires a special use permit for any proposed telecommunications facility, which is subject to planning commission approval. The proposed project is to replace an existing 71-foot-tall light pole at Frannish Park adjacent to the Pahravell Little League Baseball Field. The new light pole will include six antennas, as well as 150 square-foot accessory structure housing equipment for the telecommunications facility. On this slide, you see the proposed telecommunications facility. The star shows where the telecommunications facility would go. The proposed height is 71 feet. As you see here, the nearest property line is 191 feet. One of the development standards for establishment of telecommunications facilities is that the facility must be setback twice the height of the facility. In this instance, 71 feet requires a setback of 142 feet. As you see here on this map, it does meet the setback requirements as the setback is 191 feet. Now, we'll briefly review the Telecommunications Act, and you already heard some of the development standards for telecommunications uses found in the Watsonville Municipal Code. So what is the Telecommunications Act? It's a federal legislation that guides state and local governments to make decisions on proposed new telecommunications facilities. Not only that, it provides streamlined guidelines and timelines. That staff has to review applications. For instance, staff has 60 days to review all proposed new cell sites in order for us to meet federal regulations. So we are doing that, which is why we bring this item now in front of planning commission. As you heard earlier in the presentation, proposed telecommunications facilities are required to meet development standards found in Chapter 14-35, which includes submitted requirements. Those facilities and standards include maximum height, which for our code allows 100 feet. This facility would be 71 feet. Setbacks twice the height of the proposed facility, which is 142 feet. In this instance, is 191. That's the required separation. As far as the design, the applicant will use an existing light pole adjacent to the baseball field. What is included with the application requirement or submitted requirements is an alternative site analysis, visual simulations, a reach, search ring analysis, and a radio frequency analysis. As you see on this slide, the alternative site analysis showed that there is no telecommunications facilities in this area of the city. This search ring you see is 1,000 square foot radius. In that radius and adjacent to the search ring, there are no telecommunications facilities in existence. The visual simulation, as you see here on this slide, shows the existing 71-foot-tall light pole that will be replaced. The new six antennas will be located 61 feet on that light pole. As well as with the search ring and independent analysis, what you see on this slide is all these dots on this map for the city of Watsonville shows all the existing telecommunications facilities. As I stated earlier, this area of the city has no telecommunications facilities. The star on this map shows where this new site would be located if approved by planning commission. Part of submitted requirements also includes a radio frequency emissions compliance report. This report, it states that the project will not expose general members of the public with hazardous radio frequency energy, either at the ground level or to the buildings. It does not exceed FCC standards. The radio, you know, see compliant port shows that this would not pose hazards to pedestrians at the ground level, or like I said, in the adjacent buildings. In this case, the residential development. Part of those review provides conditions for television facilities, including recommendations from the radio frequency report, as well as once a new telecommunications facility is established, it allows co-location opportunities. For instance, Verizon or other carriers can come and decide to put new antennas there as well. So based on staff analysis, the planning commission may make the required special use permit and telecommunications use findings in support of this new telecommunications facility. With that, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the resolution approving a special use permit application and environmental review, PP 2024-7477, to allow establishment of a new telecommunications facility for T-Mobile located at 1200 Menasco Drive, Watsonville, California, APN 017-551-10. I believe we may have Representative T-Mobile here to answer any questions, and I'll be happy to answer any questions from commission as well. That concludes my report.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to bring it out back to the planning commission for clarifying or technical questions.
Good evening, thank you for the staff report. I would like to start with a question about the existing use of the light pole and how it will be impacted should it become the cell tower. Basically, what would the impact be on the existing baseball fields and how it's currently used, and then how it would be used in the future?
This instance, the impact, there wouldn't be any impact as far as hazards. What we would do is introduce a way for the league to stream games. I know the league has been trying to stream games and also provide wireless services, such as their snack bar. Without this telecommunications facility, there is no ability to stream games or provide those sales at the snack shack they have there.
And then, just a very pragmatic question. The pole is currently a light pole. Will it also continue to be, have a light on it as well?
Yes, it will continue to be a light pole, providing light for the baseball facility.
Okay, so there's no impact to the current evening lighting situation for the baseball fields with the cell tower?
Correct, there's not going to be no new lighting or other lights. It's going to be the existing lighting that's there on the light pole.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question. So, six antennas are being installed for T-Mobile only. There won't be other providers taking advantage of the same pool, or would they have to install additional pools?
If this facility would be approved, they would use the existing pole.
Okay, yeah, because I have to say, like, I've been in that neighborhood, and I get no service. And that's always a bummer. I, it's just, yeah, it's not good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other clarifying questions? Okay. Moving along, we'll bring it back to the public hearing. Any from... I'm sorry, applicant presentation. Sorry about that. Yep, please.
Applicant is here.
Hi, could you, sorry for a record. Could you, if you're not the microphone in the podium, please state your name. Thank you.
Alpha, representing for T-Mobile.
Do we have any questions from the planning commissioner for clarifying questions? Okay, see none, we'll move it to public hearing.
Thank you.
Once again, anyone from the public? Okay. We'll make an appropriate motion for this.
If I could just add, so the recommendation is before you, but there's also needs to be a finding that the project is categorically exempt pursuant to SEQA Guidelines 15303. So the planning commissioners should incorporate that finding as a part of their motion.
Thank you.
It's in the agenda.
All right, I'll go ahead and motion for the special use permit and environmental review of PP 2024-7447 to allow a new telecommunications facility located at 1200 Menasco Drive, APN 017551-10, and finding project categorically exempt pursuant to SEQA Guidelines 15303.
I'll second.
We are first and a second. Okay. We will bring it to deliberation.
Sure, I'd like to make a comment. So I wanted to acknowledge that we received two communications on this particular item. One was from a resident who was opposed to the project, and the other one was from, I believe, the president or general manager of the Little League, who was in favor of the project. So I wanted to acknowledge that we did receive those communications and that we, as commissioners, always appreciate the community's input and what you all are thinking about the projects and everything. So thank you for reaching out to us, and email is a perfectly effective method of communicating with us. With that said, I will be voting in support of this item. I do believe that this is an issue of equity and access. I believe that last map, that the city map that was shown, basically shows that this would be the first and only cell tower on the east side of our city. And I do believe that our population has continued to grow in the 10 years since this item came before the commission last. And so I believe that, you know, that we all deserve to have cell coverage in our community, throughout our community. And also wanted to recognize that there is a school right there. So when we are talking about safety concerns and access to mobile services, we're talking about a location that has schools and children. And so in terms of providing equitable coverage throughout our community, I do believe this is the right thing to do at this time. Thank you.
Deliberations are done. I'm over, it's broken, right? Acosta?
Yes.
Sension?
Yes.
Meldaw?
Yes.
Beach Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, I have some appeal language that I'd like to read tonight because we have to use permits.
I can't hear you, your mic must be off.
I apologize. I do have some appeal language that I'd like to read tonight for both items that have a special use permit. If I may?
Yeah.
Sorry. Pursuant to a Watsonville Municipal Code 14-10.1106, the decision of the planning commission shall be final unless an appeal to the council is filed pursuant to Section 14-10.1101. That appeal needs to be filed no later than 14 calendar days following the date of the action from which the appeal is being taken. Thank you.
Okay. Right, so we're going to move on to recommendation to the city to amend Title VII, Chapter 13, Public Trees in addition to a new Chapter 55 Preservation of Trees and Tree Canopies on Private Property to Title 14 of the Watson Municipal Code.
Yeah, for this item, the recommendation is to continue it to a date certain of December 3rd, but we first need to open it for a public hearing in case we receive any public comment before taking a motion to move it to that time.
So at this time, we'll move it to public comment. Anybody from the public? See none?
So we just need him.
We'll make a motion.
Just a motion in a second too, yes.
A motion to move the agenda, the agenda item to the December 3rd, 2024 meeting.
I'll second. We, roll call? Yes, please.
Okay. Acosta?
Yes.
Sension?
Yes.
Meldaw?
Yes.
Beach Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. So we're going to move to item 5C, Denial of Special Use Permit for Design Review Permit with Environmental Review on PP 2023-6377, and Recommendation to the City Council Denial of Zoning Map Amendment for a new 7,670-square-foot drive-through car wash facility on 1.18 acres, site located at 632 East Lake Avenue, APN 01732102, filed by Vance Shannon and the Quick and Quack Car Wash applicant on behalf of Bill Hanson Properties.
Hello again, planning commissioners, Associate Planner Ivan Carmona, ready to make the presentation. Tonight, we'll be discussing a denial of special use permit and design review with environmental review, PP 2023-6377, and recommending to city council denial of a zoning map amendment for a new 7,670-square-foot drive-through car wash facility located at 632 East Lake Avenue. So tonight's presentation will go slowly, in this instance, to review the project site, background, proposed project, development standard, zoning map amendment, findings, and recommendation. So the subject property at 632 East Lake Avenue is, has a general plan designation of general commercial with a zoning designation of neighborhood shopping center. As you see on this map, to the north is the East Lake Village Shopping Center. To the east is residential development. To the south, abutting, the property is a vacant property and an office at the corner of East Lake and Tuttle. And across East Lake Avenue is a mix of single-family residences and offices. So a brief background of the property. This property was initially developed in 1870 with a single-family residence known as the Rogers House. This Rogers House was relocated in 1998 to the Santa Cruz County Fairgrounds, where it was restored and designated a historical structure. Since then, the property has remained vacant. So what is this project? This project is proposing to construct a 7,670-square-foot drive-through car wash facility for quick rack car wash. In the Watson Municipal Code, establishment of drive-through facilities are subject to a special use permit approved by the planning commission. To accompany this special use permit application is also a request for a zoning map amendment. Later in the presentation, you explain, I will explain why a zoning map amendment is proposed. Continuing with the proposed project, the project will also include 15,426 square feet of new landscaping, a trash enclosure, an eight-foot-tall CMU wall located to the eastern and southern property lines, parking of 25 spaces, including 19 in the vacuum area, and six customer sparse parking spaces, one of which is designated accessible. There'll be two onsite employees, and the proposed hours would be seven days a week from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. So the zoning map request would change the zoning designation from neighborhood commercial to thoroughfare commercial. As you see on this map, the... As you see on this map, the abutting property to the northeast Lake Village Shopping Center is zoned thorough for commercial. A zoning mac zoning map amendment requires planning commission approval and must be accompanied by findings for that zoning map amendment. So why a zoning map amendment? Well, the existing zoning district of CNS does not allow a standalone drive-through car wash. Drive-through car wash is only allowed in the CNN zoning, zoning district as accessory uses to service stations. The code Watson Municipal Code does have zoning district that do allow standalone car washes, and those are the CTCN, CV and IG thorough for commercial, neighborhood commercial, visitor commercial, general industrial. So when staff does a review of an application, specifically in this instance, a drive-through facility, part of our review is to define the proposed land use. The Watson Municipal Court provides definitions, the definition of a drive-through facility. I'm going to read verbatim. A commercial use that conducts business in whole or part with a person who enters a commercial property in a motor vehicle and transacts from said motor vehicle from any location on such property that is not designated parking space. So in this instance, staff said this drive-through car wash is a drive-through. So where did this drive-through ordinance come from? Well, the city council is the policy decision maker and sets policies for the city. In two thousand via ordinance ten ninety-five dash zero-zero, the city council adopted the drive-through facilities restrictions. These restrictions and ordinance goal was to develop and develop location and design criteria for drive-through facilities to be compatible with and minimize impacts to surrounding uses. So, you know, at this point, we have to think what was happening at Watson at that time that city council decided we need a drive-through ordinance to do, to create some type of standards. Well, the goal of the ordinance was not to be a drive-throughs, but to create limitations in commercial zoning districts. So what the city council did at that time is they allowed drive-through facilities, but they subject them to special use permits approved by planning commission such as the following zoning districts in the tougher commercial, neighborhood commercial and visitor commercial. And the goal of the drive-to facility was to prohibit drive-through facilities in the downtown of Watsonville. One, one of those standards that was created in the ordinance back in two thousand was location and criteria standards specifically stating that no drive-through lane, no drive-through lane speaker menu boards and or takeout windows shall be located with a hundred and fifty feet from any property boundary line of, of a partial zone for residential purposes. I mean, at this point, as a planner, it's obvious why council decided that because with drive-throughs, there's noise, there's customers, there's transactions going on at early or late evening hours. In this instance, the issue must have been close to residential zone properties, which is why at council at that time decided to create and adopt this standard and policy. Well, we spoke about the drive-through facility. Well, does the project meet other standards? Well, it does. It meets the thorough for commercial district standards for setbacks. For instance, as you see on this table, the front setback is fifteen feet. The project is proposing hundred and eighteen. The rear setback is ten. They're proposing nine foot for the northern property line and fifty-six for the southern property line. There are no side setbacks and for the rear, the standard is ten. They're proposing fifty-two. The building height allowed in the CT zoning district is thirty-five. They're proposing twenty-nine. So it does meet these standards and also meets parking. A, the Watson Municipal Court requires eleven parking spaces for a drive-through facility that is seven thousand square feet. The project is proposing twenty-five parking spaces, nineteen of them in the vacuum area, six for customers, one of which is accessible parking. So the, the project is really trying to be designed to keep all these constraints in mind. It's proposing an A-four toss CMU wall along the eastern and southern property lines. Not only that, as you see on the plan, it's including a lot of landscaping. It's proposing fifteen thousand four hundred and twenty, four hundred and twenty-six square feet of landscaping, which is twenty-five percent of the project site. The drive-through facility ordinance only requires four percent of the site to be landscaped along with the landscaping and they're providing twenty-seven new trees, four of which will be planted along the frontage of the property. To accompany the project, they're also providing a new trash enclosure that meets city standards. They have submitted a lighting and photometric plan that shows that no spillover of light would occur onto adjacent residential properties or the public right-of-way. They've submitted stormwater control plans that is proposing thirty-five thousand five hundred and fourteen square feet of new impervious surface. It is considered a tier for project. The public works department reviewed the stormwater control plan and found it to be in compliance. The applicant also submitted a traffic impact analysis, which was prepared by Armin D. Hovensinian with HTC, AHTC Inc. What the traffic impact analysis showed, it compared other quick quack and other service stations on East Lake. So it specifically, it compared a quick wreck in Fontana, California and other service stations along East Lake. What the report found was that because of the high traffic volume on East Lake Avenue being highway one fifty-two, it would capture those existing vehicles traveling along this high thorough for corridor. But the report did recommend installing stop signs at the driveway entrance of the project and installing no parking signs along the frontage of the property. The applicant also submitted a noise impact study with the car wash facility vacuums and industrial blowers occurring when people are washing their vehicles. This is why a sound wall was proposed. As you see here on this operational noise level contours, all the noise is being pushed toward East Lake, but the report states that most of the ambient noise in this area occurs because of the highway one fifty-two corridor and the adjacent shopping center to the north. What it's saying is that the existing ambient decibels for the environment is between forty-seven and sixty-five decibels. With the project, the anticipated ambient noise would rise between forty-nine and sixty-six decibels. What that means is there would be an increase in noise from three to four decibels. As you see on this chart here, it is just perceptible. But the project is considering the noise wall, the landscaping to be, to try to mitigate the noise. But at the same time, the noise impact study stating this is a noisy area due to the high corridor of highway one fifty-two and the adjacent shopping center to the north. So I know planning commission has seen a lot of information, but part of a planner's job and staff's job is to make findings in support or in denial of a project. Now, our municipal court has seven findings for design review special use permit and two for zoning map amendment. In this instance, the project is a good project. It did a lot to meet all standards, but it didn't meet the drive-through facility ordinance, which is a hundred and fifty-foot setback for residential zone properties. And I'll be happy to elaborate that more. As you see here, here's all the designer review permit findings. And I'll read the first one just so you understand the type of analysis planners have to do. So the proposed development is consistent with the goals and policies embodied in the adopt general plan and the general purpose and intent of the applicable district regulations. So what is the evidence? Well, the project is inconsistent with the applicable district regulations because it does not comply with the development standards, separate requirements found in the drive-through facilities ordinance, which is, as we stated earlier, a hundred and fifty foot setback from residential zone properties. Not only that, in order to make findings, the city has a general plan that is supposed to be the master of the, of the city and the zoning ordinance implements that general plan. Well, goal four point eight requires the city ensure that future development is consistent with the general plan to the city's zoning ordinance and development standards. In this instance, a zoning map amendment wouldn't, would not be enough to approve this project because it does not, it does not meet the development standards for the drive-through facilities, specifically the hundred and fifty foot setback from residential zone properties. Again, I want to state that city council adopted this policy back in two thousand and we have this policy that's been in place for the last twenty-four years. Here's another example of the findings for special use permit. In this instance, I will read the last section F, the proposed special use will not be materially detrimental to the public health, safety, convenience and welfare and will not result in material damage or prejudice to other property in the vicinity. In this instance, staff cannot make that finding because it's not consistent with the drive-through facility ordinance. So there's no way we can say this is, will be a secure public health, safety and convenience when we have standards in place that council adopted in two thousand to regulate drive-through facilities. And here are the zoning map amendment findings. There are two findings staff has to make that the proposed amendment is consistent with the policies, policies embodied in the general plan. Again, as I've been stating, I've been recycling the same information because it's, it's the same standard that is inconsistent with findings for making recommendations for this project, which is why staff is recommending denial. With that said, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the resolution denying a special use permit and design review with the environment review PP twenty twenty-four or sorry, twenty twenty-three in this case as a typo dash six-three-seven-seven and adopt the resolution recommending the city council denying of a zoning map amendment to change the zoning designation of the parcel from neighborhood shopping center to a thorough for commercial for a new seven thousand six hundred and seventy square foot drive-through car wash facility on the one point one eight acre site located at six thirty-two East Lake Avenue. APN oh one seven dash three-two-one dash oh-two. We do have a representative, a quick crack here. Unfortunately, he had a presentation prepared, which was a video, but because of the sound, he can't play it, but he'll be happy to speak here. And I do believe we have the property owner here as well. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
At this time, I'd like to bring it back to the planet commission for any clarifying or technical questions. We have any from the plan commission? Well. Okay, applicant presentation.
Push and hold. Hi, my name is Vance Shannon and I present quick pack car wash. Thank you, Ivan, for the presentation. Clearly, we miss on one of the ordinance and that's the only one. We meet everything else. My argument is that we're not considered, we should not be considered a drive-through. And I would like the city council to be able to rule on that. And the reason I say that for a few reasons, we're a membership-based car wash. Eighty percent of our customers are members. They don't stop. They don't do a transaction. They simply pull up, a gate opens and they go through the wash without interacting with anyone. We have paying customers, it's a small number that do pay, but there's not a menu board per se. And I guess that's me. There's not a menu board per se. There's a person with a tablet, so it's not loud. It's people talking and that's all it really is. It's a big difference from a QSR. And I think when they wrote the ordinance, they weren't referring to a car wash. I don't believe it's mentioned at all. The other item I wanted to mention, you have eight car washes in your city. That's it. You have no express car washes at all. But you have four wand wash car washes, which are a waste of water. When you use a professional car wash like ours, we save about seventy gallons a car. So you're depriving yourself and the city of this water savings by not allowing a car wash. And that's really other than what the landlord would like to present. Unless you have questions for me. That's what I wanted to show.
Sorry, for record purposes, can you say your name?
My name is Vance Shannon.
Thank you.
I don't have any of your questions.
Thank you, Vance. Any planning commissioner clarifying technical questions? Thank you. Thank you. Public hearing?
Can I still go for applicant?
It's, it's, this is public hearing, so.
He's part of, he's the.
Yeah, part of the, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, yes. Yeah, I'm sorry.
You know, it's twenty twenty-four, so I'm sure that the video that was sent, Ivan, have you have it?
Yes.
And I have audio. Wouldn't that be? So why don't we go ahead and we'll roll the tape. I'll play the audio and then you folks can get a three-minute presentation of quick back. How's that sound? Well, this sure sounds like Scott audio.
That.
Right?
We're currently having audio issues, so.
Test. One, one, two. Can I just play it through this?
Would the, would the video be played as well?
The video is going to be played on the big screen, which was forwarded to the planner earlier today, actually, or yesterday, Vance?
Yesterday.
Yesterday.
So do we have the video that we can play? So we can play the audio?
I don't think we.
Well, Ivan, you just, didn't you just say you had it?
Yeah.
Okay, so why don't we roll the tape if that's okay? And I'll go ahead and play the audio so we can at least find out what quick quacks all about.
I'm sorry.
It's, it's, it's at the chair's discretion whether or not he's going to allow that, so.
I'll allow it.
Excellent. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Maybe, maybe, Mr. Chair, we could take a couple minute break.
Sure.
Would that be before this?
Right, so that staff can get.
We'll take a break and then we'll come back.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I'll press it.
Okay, excellent. All right. Ready?
Since two thousand and four, Quick Quack Car Wash has been one of the largest and fastest growing car wash platforms in the United States. Quick Quack is a founder-led, one hundred percent express exterior car wash model disrupting the car wash industry with a vision to be fast, clean and loved everywhere. Quick service. Our team members are not only friendly, but skilled at getting customers through quickly with average transaction times under thirty seconds. From checking the customer in, evaluating their need for a membership and completing the membership enrollment or transaction, we are fast. Fast lanes. With each location designed for both high quality and high volume, the lines move quickly. Three-minute wash. When a customer enters our showroom, the car will be cleaned, shined and dried in under three minutes. Clean. When your car shines on the outside, we smile on. Clean. When your car shines on the outside, we smile on the inside. Clean car guaranteed. If you're not a hundred percent satisfied, we'll rewash your car on the spot. Inside and out. Free vacuums at most locations and dash wipes help give luster to your cars inside too. Tidy team members and locations. Not only are our locations a source of pride, ensuring a bright, clean and comfortable environment, our team members present themselves in a clean and tidy way. Each customer is greeted with a smile, clean white shirt and tie, allowing everyone to feel welcomed. Clean and green. We take pride in being environmentally friendly by conserving and recycling the water we use to wash your car. Loved. You love your car. We love helping you look good and making our communities better. Customer love. Everyone loves our adorable mascot Quackles. Our customers also love our unlimited car wash memberships and free vacuums. Team member love. We invest in the dreams of our team members and teach them life and leadership skills to help them learn and grow surrounded by a strong culture of smart, kind and driven people and values. Community love. We partner with schools, community groups and charitable organizations with creative sponsorships and fundraisers, including more than three hundred and thirty special fundraisers over the past five years. Everywhere. Quick Quack is conveniently located with multiple locations serving our communities, adding even more value to our unlimited car wash memberships and growing quickly with dedicated real estate development and construction teams comprised of internal and external experts and processes, allowing us to move faster than the competition. Quick Quack has vertically integrated into proprietary software solutions and digital offerings like license plate recognition as well as state of the art car wash equipment manufacturing and R and D. We could not be more excited about our future and remain committed to our mission of changing lives for the better and ensuring our customers don't drive dirty.
Thank you very much for allowing us to present that. Couple of things. The only thing I have to say is I I know that Ivan, associate planner, has a duty and obligation to recommend denial to the planning commission. However, on October twenty second, in the same venue, city council directed staff and and we can play that tape as well because evidently prior to the start of this meeting, there was a conversation that what took place didn't take place. So city council directed staff to come back with suggested ordinance to make it to where there are three specific areas in the city that wouldn't have to comply with the drive through ordinance. And we felt that that thirty days had elapsed since that time, it would have come back. However, it wasn't. In fact, we were actually asked to pull this from tonight's agenda. But yet no rough draft on what the revised drive through ordinance would be. So at this point in time, city council will end up looking at this. But I guess our request would be for planning commission to either table it and forward it on to city council or look at the others that have been approved. I think it's six seventy six East Lake. On August seventh, twenty twenty two, planning commission approved a drive through car wash. Now, the proximity that they have to the adjacent residential is about six feet. And ours, the closest that we're at, we're at about fifty feet. And we're just asking for the planning commissioners to look at that, make sure that everybody is being treated fairly. And certain projects aren't discriminated against. So with that being said, if you have any questions, I'll go ahead and answer. Otherwise, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Could you speak your name for the record, please?
Sure, William. Last name is Hanson. H A N S E N.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, do we have any planning commissioner clarifying or technical question? Seeing none. We'll bring it to public hearing. Anyone from the public?
Good evening. My name is Leanne Jones. And I would just like to say that I am a resident within the proposed zoning map amendment and I want to say that I I agree with Ivan's decision to deny this. As a resident, I really, to use the language in the ordinance, I do believe this proposal will be detrimental to our public health, safety, convenience and welfare. And some examples are, you know, the lighting, particularly it says the poles are going to be sixteen feet tall, but the the eight foot fence is much shorter than that. There's already a ton of light that comes from the staff of life. Shopping center and I can imagine now it's going to be on both sides of my backyard. Also, the noise study indicates, you know, that there the impact would be between just perceptible to clearly noticeable. And this is just an anticipated one time study. So this doesn't take into account the constant usage of this of, you know, of the blowers. And I can say, you know, as a resident of Watsonville, there are many folks that are proud with their cars. A lot of our cars is active used. And I can see this being used, you know, at all hours of operation from seven o'clock till nine o'clock. So I rarely use my backyard now because of the noise that comes from the refrigeration from the shopping center. And just this is just going to add more noise as well. And I also previously lived near a similar car wash. I was well beyond a hundred fifty feet away. About like five blocks away and I could hear it. And there was trees, buildings, you know, blocks and materials and I could constantly hear. And also, there is another car wash that is just half a mile away from us. So I also want to just add here that I, you know, lastly, I'm in a disagreement with any future amending or removing any of these drive through ordinance. Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Raed Farhat, local business owner, district seven. One of the things I wanted to talk about was just the consistency about when we approve projects, there seems to be a thing that goes on with the city about which projects actually get approved and which ones don't. I appreciate Ivan's work with finding the resolution that's been in place since two thousand and one. But there has been multiple businesses that have been approved since then. The one Mr. Hanson referenced, the six seventy six gas station, I actually developed that back in two thousand and seven. And we were allowed to put a car wash at that time. I sold the I've sold the property since then. And the new owners coming in and doing an automatic car wash, which you guys approved in twenty twenty two. So just and that's down the street. So I mean, we're talking as close to proximity as you're going to be able to get with the apples to apples location. Like Mr. Hanson mentioned, the six seventy six gas station property, we were six feet away from a neighbor. When we developed this back in two thousand and seven, both planning commission and city council unanimously approved them both. The existing ordinance was in place then, as that's been here since two thousand and one. So the on Main Street has a drive through that has been approved since. And I guess my position is is just the consistency of which projects get done. It's not fair that in this case, here even one, I was one of the beneficiaries of one of those projects being approved, but yet somebody else was trying to do a good business for Watsonville that is needed gets denied. So the precedent has been sent previously that these uses are allowed regardless of what the ordinance, whether it be via variance or whatever, or what it may be, there is methods to get this approved. So whether it be this project, other projects, I urge you just to be consistent with what it is that you guys do because as developers here, we don't know what to do anymore. Because if it's something that you guys have set precedent in the past that has been done and you have somebody who's a local who's who will build a good product for Watsonville that's needed. And the only thing that we have is a site of code that's twenty four years old and that we've approved projects since then, I don't think it's fair to the developer. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Stephen McGee. I'm a resident within the proposed affected area. I also agree with the denial. I'd like to although some may seem may think that's antiquated, I do think that is important to keep residential areas as quiet as possible in this particular neighborhood. I've got to know a lot of my neighbors. There's a bunch of apartment buildings and and things that surround the whole thing, not just the the housing. But in a lot of them are hardworking people. And what we need is to be effective in the community of Watsonville to work here, work and play is to have somewhere safe and quiet to lay their heads and and rest. I believe that this business, although I appreciate the attempts to mitigate the noise and and things like that and I, you know, with trees and eight foot walls and things like that, I I think that's a great attempt. I do believe it falls short, though I like Leanne Jones was up here. She mentioned she would. I I've also been in the within five blocks of one of these types of businesses and they are extremely loud, even at five blocks. And that's with a bunch of things in between us and the the business. So, yeah, I just I I'd like to just stress how important I I think this ordinance still is in keeping people, you know, healthy and effective, you know. There just as there are sound studies, there are sleep studies and relaxation, you know, it's really important to after a hard day's work to be able to come home and and not have to, you know, crank up the TV because there's this constant droning going on or, you know. Yeah, so I don't. You know, another thing, you know, after watching that that nice video that Quick Quack presented us the whole time I'm thinking, man, that Mr. Quick Quack Duck, I really hope he has somewhere, you know, nice and quiet to to lay his head also. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Martha Vega. I live in district two. Thank you, planning commissioners. I wanted to let you know I'm in support that you approve this proposal of this coming business that wishes to do this. I understand there's a Watson municipal code ordinance fourteen dash forty one that was approved twenty four years ago. And I don't know what intentions were, but there's also unintended consequences as a result, right? In twenty four years, our society has changed and a lot of like future cars that are going to be used and, you know, just there's many changes that are taking place in community and there's been revenue that has been lost because there's been businesses that have wanted to be here and they have been turned away because of this ordinance. And so it would be a great idea. I know it was discussed in October twenty second city council meeting and they're looking into making change with that. And we have this business owner that is from Watsonville and wants to invest in our community. And I think it's a good idea now in regards to noise, there's restrictions, right? It's not like it's a concert venue. And so there's other cities such as Salinas, downtown that has developed or downtown Santa Cruz, Monterey, Watsonville, we, you know, we're still stagnant, but I think there's a lot of potential. It's time for change. It's time to to, you know, think outside the box, think of the potentials that we could have. I hope that you're able to also consider the thirty three percent of our youth that is unspoken that one day will be here speaking. I have students that are here from Pahravelli High School and I hope that, you know, one day they come and speak in front of you and they're the they're going to be turning eighteen and voting. And they'll be looking at meetings that take place of civic engagement. So know that you are. Thank you for your service. Thank you for volunteering. Thank you for being on the board. And thank you, everybody that spoke in favor or against and also for the businesses that are here investing in our community. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joan Garrett and I live right behind the shopping center where all the noise is coming from. And I would really hate to see big tall walls going up right there. And there's people living in apartments right there. And it would just not be right. It would. And there's children trying to walk home from school and there's going to be a lot of traffic if there's eighty people getting their cars washed at once. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers from the public? Okay, seeing none. We will move to appropriate motions. Any motions from the commissioners? Okay.
If there's no motion at this time, the planning commission can consider discuss the item to see if the planning commission can get to appropriate motions.
Sounds good. Can we discuss to get to appropriate motion? So we're moving to the location. May score. We've taken the can down the road here. So let's discuss this and see if we can come up with something here.
Would you allow us to ask a few more questions now that we've heard public comment and maybe have thought of some other things?
Yes, absolutely. Yes, let's do that. Let's let's.
Okay.
Let's do it.
To ask questions of staff, you don't need to open up the public hearing again?
I think, are you asking to ask questions from the applicant?
Or staff?
From the staff.
I have a question for staff and then perhaps a follow up for that.
Yes.
Okay. Um, so my question for staff is a question of timing and why did this project come before us right now? And I am aware that there was the city council meeting in October where drive throughs were added as a new business item. I did actually submit a comment to the city council about the those items as well. And so I'm hoping that you could offer some insight as to what looks like a kind of quick process or procedure for bringing this here tonight.
The project was deemed complete September. In September. So this was the regularly scheduled first regularly scheduled meeting that we could get this project on for review. So after the completeness determination was made, we reached out, staff reached out to the applicant and let them know that they could get on the November nineteenth meeting. So that had already been sort of noted on the calendar. And then the October Uh, and then the October meeting happened, the city council, where they discussed the drive-through ordinance, potential changes to it. So, following that. Uh, staff reached out uh as the property owner mentioned um to lay out a path forward for the project if changes to the zoning or. Ordinance were to be made, uh how this project could move forward potentially with a recommendation of approval. Um, they opted not to do so, so that's not a question I can answer.
Any other questions or deliberation from the commissioners?
So, if I may, okay, cuz we're, it it's been really quiet. It's like crickets and I I'm not. Sorry, I don't mean this disrespect, but um. We, we received this packet yesterday on the doorstep. There's a lot of information to process through here. I know that, you know, Commissioner Beech Olson stated that um this is brought to the planning commission. And um. We, 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 we got to kind of filter to that, but then we get this and we, we have to make a decision tonight. And I I'm sure it's difficult for the commissioners. Um, it's nothing easy about this. I'm really for. Business in our community. Um, I believe in it. I understand that uh, hey, look, I grew up in that, I I grew up. Four streets down from there, by, well, maybe a few blocks, so I'm not gonna say what street I lived on and I've been here. Little over five decades, so. Um, I know about noise and I know about traffic. And I know about my street. It used to be really quiet, you know, as we evolve, things change. This is the way things happen. We have to start to kind of get, not to get used to it, not to conform to it, to say, okay. You know, that works, this works, that doesn't, but I believe in businesses, you know, growing the city of Watsonville. So. I'm just gonna put it out there. I'm for business and um I'm. You know, car washes, you know, I drive from here all the way to. Ventura, I mean, I have an office in Oxnard and. I go to car washes all the time and they're not loud. I'm sorry, but they're not noisy. Um, some of them do have like, you know, big lighting and that area is dark. Big lighting helps. It, you know, it's, it's not that it's not, it's, it, it helps, so. I'm gonna leave it up to, I mean, I hope some of you guys can help me out here. Whatever your decision is, I'm okay, but um. You, we just have to remember that the, 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 basically what they're saying, cuz I heard somebody say to approve, if we approve. Then we approve to deny it. If, do I stand corrected?
So, the staff's recommendation is to deny the special use permit, which is the, within the purview of the planning commission. That decision is made by the planning commission. The recommendation is also to, also to recommend, adopt a resolution recommending to the city council. Denial of the zoning map amendment. That's a decision that the council makes.
So I think if we can just make sure we're all clear on what we're gonna, what we're gonna do here. I just wanna make sure we're. Hundred percent clear on what we're doing before we make any decisions.
And Chair, if I could add one other thing, there's only four of you this evening and there has to be four affirmative votes. One way or the other, so it would have to be a unanimous decision.
So. As Chair, and it, again, this is your final decision as. Commissioners. I'm fourth car wash. I mean, I, I, I think, you know, it, 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 you know, I heard that, you know, noise, I heard lighting, I heard uh there, there may be another. Which I don't understand how another stop sign is gonna be put in there. I don't get that part, but. Um, it, it seems traffic already flows smoothly through there. I'm sure something will come up. That that could get resolved, but again, if we're wanting to. You know. Watsonville's a small community and we need, it's gonna grow and and these are things we're gonna have to look at as we go forward. What do I know? I'll leave it up to you guys at this point. Please, help me.
So I do think that one of the other things that we could do here this evening is that we could. Uh, table this item for a future date. Um, what that might. Afford us as the commission, the opportunity to do um is to see if council um is able to. Think about or work through an ordinance change for the drive-throughs. Um, and so then should that go into place, then this would come back to us and we might have an updated ordinance that we would. Feel more comfortable with implementing. Um, there are, so there are two pieces to. What we've been asked to do here tonight. One is adopt the resolution for the special use permit for the car wash. And then the second one is um adopt a rep uh resolution. Of the zoning map amendment change to the zoning designation. And it's that particular item um that I have difficulty with. Um, because that is where the one hundred and fifty-foot setback comes into play and we're consist. We as commissioners are consistently being asked to uh. In, in order to approve the project, to overlook that one hundred and fifty-foot setback that is a part of the ordinance. And so therefore, we, we as a commission, should we. Approve the project and approve the zoning map amendment, um we would say for this. Basically, for this project, we looked at the amendment or we looked at the existing ordinance and we said, nope, we don't have to follow that existing ordinance. And off we went. I'm really not okay with setting that precedent um and what that could mean for future projects. Um, so perhaps my fellow commissioners um would also be interested in considering. Tableting this and. Trying again in a few months.
I, I, I don't wanna disagree with you, Beech Olson, but I think the setback, I mean, it. It's project by project, right? It's, it's not to say that we're gonna approve every project. It's gonna be brought to the commission or the planning, the planning commission or. Um, city council. But it, this is. This is East Lake Avenue, the corner of East Lake Avenue, right? And tunnel. I don't, I don't follow what you mean by the setback. I get it, that it, it, it makes sense to approve this. Now. Okay.
So. If, if I may, um interpreting Commissioner Beech Olson, if, if I could assist. I think what she's saying is that in order to up, to approve the project. You would need to make a finding that the project meets the standards in municipal code section fourteen dash forty-one point one hundred and eighty-one, which is the hundred and fifty-foot setback. And I think what she's saying, and correct me if I'm, if not, I'm not interpreting this correctly. I think what she's saying is. She can't make that determination based on what staff has set. And therefore, the project doesn't meet all the requirements of the drive-through facilities standards.
That's what she's saying, but does that mean that we can't make a motion to approve?
Yes, that's what that means.
Okay, just wanna make sure.
It, it, it means that we, the staff can't find a way to find, make the findings that are necessary. If you can come up with a reason that it, how it does meet that requirement, then. Then, of course, discuss with the planning commissioners and then, you know, if, if the planning commission desires and can support. Findings of approval, then we can come back with an alternative resolution.
We kind of jumped around a little bit here. We went from appropriate motion deliberation to where we're at now and now I have. An applicant that wants to, it sounds like he wants to say something. Can I allow him to say something?
It's up to you.
Yes, I'd like him to come up and say.
So you'd be opening the public.
Back to the public, yes.
Thank you for the opportunity. I just wanna address um the twenty-four-hour notice. Um, I think it's extremely disrespectful for you folks to get this dropped in your lap. It's, it's a lot. I think it's three hundred and forty-eight pages. If I'm not mistaken. I mean, I've gone through it. I had a duty and obligation to go through it, but I will share with you. There's somebody here that we can maybe ask Matt Borbok. He was the one who actually authored an email to Quick Quack back in October. Stating that this package would be available on the fourteenth of November. So, I actually followed up. With staff and city manager yesterday and I asked, hey, we're getting a recommendation for denial of something that we've worked on for. Two and a half years, so this didn't just show up. We've worked on it for two and a half years. October twenty-second, city council was pretty directed when they told staff to come back with revised drive-through ordinance parameters. To think that we're gonna put a pin in a hundred and fifty footer. I think you're gonna find out that city council is gonna make amendments to that. We have six seventy-six, which is the car wash on East Lake. That has, again, a six-foot. We have McDonald's right across the street that has residential on both sides. The project that we're proposing, we're doing the sound mitigation, we've done the photometrics, we've done the traffic impact analysis, we have over two hundred thousand into this project. Heads up from former community development director, Susie Miriam. She stated specifically in an email, and I have all of this, so I'm stating it on the record, I can provide it to anybody. There's an email where she said changing the zoning to CT would allow the car wash to go through. That was what was told. So, we would have had, we were told to pay forty-one thousand for the zoning change. We got that revised. Ivan revised it, didn't do a general plan amendment, just did a zoning plan amendment. It was fourteen plus the other. It was twenty-eight thousand dollars, twenty-five to twenty-eight thousand. Paid it, paid it in December of last year. January nineteenth of this year, we got an incomplete letter. And inside that incomplete letter, it was specifically stated that we would have to change the zoning to CT to allow. For this project to move forward. Fast forward to the end of May, our traffic impact analysis consultant inquired with planners. Hey, what do you need? We wanna get a scope. What do you need? Three months later, three months later. We got a response on August fifth stating a couple items. I set up a meeting with Courtney, Director of Public Works. We got the TIA resolved. Submitted it. Fast forward on September twenty-fifth, we get, it's gonna keep going. On September twenty-fifth, we get a letter from Ivan saying he's recommending denial. Great. We obviously hit the roof, got a hold of the city manager. City manager said it was gonna be presented to the city council. Got a letter on October fifth from Susie Miriam right before she left. Stating that the city council was gonna review the drive-through ordinance and make the appropriate changes that they felt would be. Consistent with the evolution of the city. October twenty-second, as I stated previously, they directed staff to come back with revisions to the drive-through ordinance. It's on the tape, three minutes left on the tape at the end of the meeting. Council member Ari Parker stated specifically. Go ahead, have that come back to city council, not go to planning first, but the city council, they wanted to look at it, present it to planning, planning would go ahead and review it. Recommend it to city council and then it'd be done. So the bottom line is. I apologize for the failure of staff and your city manager to give you time to review this project. Three hundred and forty-eight pages dropped in your lap. It's pathetic. So, with that being said, my frustration is we have time and money. Tomorrow, she's gonna get her paycheck, no matter what, whether or not this gets approved. All staff, they're gonna get approved. I just can't tell you the obstructions that we face on a daily basis. We built fifty-four units, we built seventeen units, we built six units, we put a school in, we put the county in, we put the Craig in it. We put Forever Fly Skate. I mean, you know how many developments we've done in this town and every single one, it's getting harder and harder and harder. To carry the cross, the cross that's imposed by the bureaucrats. I'll tell you. You folks do what you need to do, but I am so disgusted with the performance of staff and management. It is absolutely obscene. And guess what? Leading the witness, that's what I've observed this evening and I'll tell you, if you roll the tape at the October twenty-second, you'll see exactly. What staff was directed to do. So I apologize that I'm animated, but it had to be said because it wasn't done. Last minute for this. This was a two-and-a-half-year project, over two hundred thousand. We've been paying property taxes on that for over twenty years.
Bill, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
I'm gonna take over at this point. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Let me shut this off. Sorry, and I apologize for being long-winded.
So. I'm gonna go back to what I said. I. I, I already closed it. Thank you. So, just for. No, so I opened it and then, okay, go ahead, one sec. I'll open it again for one sec. It's over, just kidding. Minutes like that, no, I'm just kidding. I'm, I'll be really quick. Um, so to you directly, Ed, is that correct?
Yes.
Sorry, my vision's really bad. Um, so I can't imagine you've been to a car wash and thought, this is really quiet. Um, particularly the drive-through ones. So that, you know, that, and I, I feel like your, your narrative has been a little dismissive as far as um. The people that have to live directly near this thing. I, as a previous um small business owner, I do, I'm totally like pro-business, I get it, right, but um. I've. I, I think, you know, the, the things that it offers the community is, is great, right? Um, more revenue and things like that. And the things that they showed in their, their clip, you know, all these community benefits, like things like. Things of that sort. Uh, however, I think more importantly, in this particular case. Um, having, being surrounded uh pretty closely on three sides with residential. Built buildings and and people, you know, spending their day-to-day there. I think in this case, it's even more important than that. Important to have those people feel um safe and have a nice, quiet place to live. On that, you know, this is not just so, you know, I, I, I urge everybody to really think apart, you know, think about um their decision if they are actually, if you guys end up doing, making a decision today. Thinking about the uh day, everyday effects that will have on the surrounding people, like for instance, like there's apartments on the. Uh, south side of this proposed uh property. There's an eight-foot wall going to be up. I don't know if you noticed, you can't really see it on, on the map, but. The buildings, uh, it's like um an apartment building that goes way up, um above eight feet. Um, those people will have no protection, you know, other than maybe a few trees that they plan on putting up. Gonna have to deal with that, you know, not everybody works nine to five. Some people have to sleep during the day. Um, I like. I like, just, you know, throwing that out there, I really appreciate you letting me step up and, and get my other side. And not just, you know, have one. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I just wanna be respectful. Any other public speakers? Okay.
This is Leanne Jones again. I just wanted to say that I'm all for local businesses. And I also, you know, want to clearly say that, you know, is, is this a particular business that the community needs? And I also would have really appreciated, as a normal, everyday person that's not in government bureaucracy, I've gotten letters as a resident. I don't know what they say. So I would have totally appreciated any business owner to reach out to the community. Let us know, you know, and get, get some input or, or at least just let us know. So, you know, I think that just involving the community in these projects could, could be beneficial in so many different ways. So I just wanted to, to throw that out there that, you know, I'm glad that I am coming to this today and I've, you know, looked into it. I work full-time and I spent all the time reading through all those documents. Maybe I didn't understand everything, but I really took the time to understand what's going on. So I just, you know, to any of the business owners here, I, you know, I, I'm a social worker by, by, you know, my eight, my nine to five, eight to five. And involving the community in such decisions is so important, and I don't think that the community was involved in this. And I would just like to say that on record. So thank you so much for the time.
Thank you.
Members of the commission, my name is Elia Blyett, District One. I, I really didn't come here to urge you to approve the denial or vote in favor of approving of the thing, but more so of really procedural question. Number one, you, along with the journalist, along with the public, only received the agenda materials approximately twenty-four hours before this meeting. For a complicated agenda item like this, that's outrageous. There's no way on earth you could possibly making a proper competent decision for something with those type of reports and complexity. The other thing too is, you have a issue going on with trying to decide zoning change from CNS to a CT. Apart from this car wash, there are a host of complexities that exist with doing that that have not been properly fleshed out or developed, that you aren't aware of as well. The other thing as well is, is that the developer has explained to you that in fact, he has been run through a bunch of end runs and dead ends and goose chases. And in, in the process, he's described to you the injustice that he has gone through. But at the same time, you, the commissioners, you are tasked with making some difficult decisions that require competence and wisdom. And staff's approach on this, on a procedural basis alone, is depriving you of a proper procedure and framework for you to exhibit wisdom and competence on this. And again, I'm not trying to promote or attack this project, but if I was in your shoes and sitting in the audience, I was thinking this. If I was in your shoes, I would not be prepared to cast a vote on this thing. Simply not enough time or preparation that's offered by staff. And staff have the advantage of six weeks leading up to this. And the fact that they couldn't give you three-day notice as is typical for a public agenda like this is very telling. And, and for that reason, then I would urge you, do not be hasty, do not be foolish. This thing has not been prepared and presented to you adequately for you to be making a decision on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other members from the public? All right, at this point, I'm gonna close it. Now we're closed, right? All right, all right, so.
Respond to some of the comments about the notice, the agenda.
Sure, if I can make a few comments and I'll let you share. So. Well, I wanna thank the community for, for coming out and speaking this evening. I know that, you know, it takes your time to come out and thank you for sharing. I greatly appreciate it and I respect everything you said and duly noted that, you know, what, what's been shared with us. But I, I didn't, there's a few things I didn't know that were shared this evening by the applicant. But, you know, for the public, this is what we received, right here. This is what we received yesterday. So commissioners, did you all read this? You did. Great for you. That mean you have all day to do that. We all have full-time jobs. I, I, I have a full. Great for you. Great, fabulous. So to process all this, it's a lot, okay? Maybe you already had a decision made. I don't know. But again, I'll go back some time ago where I said disappointed, very disappointed in you all. Shame on you. I mean, sorry, I know you're new, but you're part of the, you're part of the wheel. Shame on you all. This kinda stuff should not be happening. Now, if we have commissioners on this commission that wanna go some other way, I'm fine. You know what? I'm not part of this. I'm going to be an advocate for the community, for business. And I believe that we need businesses that are, you know, sound. And I understand the community came out to speak tonight, but not okay. So.
So I, I just wanted to state for the record that the Brown Act has two types of meetings, among other types of meetings, but there's a regular and a special meeting. This is a special meeting of the planning commission. And so the Brown Act requires that the agenda be published twenty-four hours ahead of, of the meeting. And that was, we complied with that requirement for this meeting.
Actually, I'll correct you on the Brown. The Brown Act takes a minimum twenty-four hour. Hold on.
This is not your opportunity to speak. This is not your opportunity to speak. Thank you.
You'll be truthful though.
So the agenda was published at least twenty-four hours prior to the meeting.
Thank you.
And that was sufficient for the Brown Act. And there are times when we have to call a special meeting and the publication is compliant with the Brown. If the planning commission feels that there wasn't sufficient time to review the agenda items or you need more time to consider, or you would like staff to bring back more information for you, then it is wholly within the planning commission's purview to continue the item. You could also consider continuing the item so that more planning commissioners are available to deliberate at a future date.
I just feel we don't, at this time, we don't have time to make a decision. But I can't speak for the commissioners. So can we make a motion to? I, I don't want, I don't wanna kick the can down the road too far down. It's like gonna hold them up. But I do wanna have a timeframe where we can.
So I would recommend that you continue it to a date certain, then the notice will follow the hearing. And we would have a specific date on target for returning to the planning commission. The, the issue is, of course, we, we don't, we may not have room at the next regular meeting for this item, or we may want to push it into the new year.
I don't, I don't really wanna push this into the new year if we, so.
So you only have one other regular meeting?
Right, I got that.
In this year, and, and that has an agenda, I, I don't know what's on it, so I don't, I can't speak to that. But my suggestion would be to, to make it for the, the meeting in January after the holidays, where you're likely to have a full planning commission. Do we have a date on that? January seventh. But it's, it's within the councils, I mean, the planning commission's discretion.
We're, we're a little bit packed up against the wall, 'cause we have the holidays and everybody's, you know, it's unpredictable on who's gonna be able to attend these meetings. Sorry, kind of process. So if we, we have our meeting on the third. Right, is it third, December third? Could we have another special board meeting? On the second week of December?
That, that would be difficult to do right now. We can't really secure a special meeting date right now. So it would be better to continue it either to a date uncertain, and then staff can try to coordinate a special meeting. Or continue it to the date certain, the next regular meeting in January.
Could we send out an email and find out if that would be something that would work for commissioners?
Right, but that would need to take time. So I would say, in that case, if you wanna do it sooner, then to continue it to date uncertain.
So can we send out an email to commissioners and see if we can plan it for the second week of December?
But you'd still leave it up to grasp if you can answer, so we can come back and see, none of us can.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. It's just a, it's just putting it out there.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying is that the planning commission can continue it to date uncertain and staff will work with the planning commissioners to try to find a date that works for everyone. And then send out the proper notices and conduct that hearing when it works for everyone.
So let me rephrase the question. So instead of saying the second week, can we just put dates out there in December that might work for anybody?
Staff will certainly try to coordinate that. I'm sure Ms. Director May can speak to that, but that the problem is we don't have everybody here right now.
We understand that, but you, you, we constantly send out emails. We're, so it's just, yeah.
Staff can do that.
Okay, great, okay.
Yeah, we certainly can try to schedule a meeting at a special hearing date. We can't confirm, obviously, right now whether or not that can occur, which is why city attorney is advising you that to not select one of our regularly scheduled meetings would be to continue it to a date uncertain, and then we would do our best to find a date where everyone is available.
So. So we're gonna have a regular scheduled meeting on December third. And then we'll put it out there for the record that we're gonna recall, we're gonna send out an email to commissioners for other days in December, correct? Okay. Does? It's all on me tonight, I guess. So we're gonna make a motion to move this to some day, hopefully in December. Is that what we're?
So you continue to date uncertain.
Uncertain to December. Okay, with corrections staff to coordinate in the month of December. I mean, unless there's anything else before we make a decision.
I think it would be great to have a full commission for this item, so I'm in favor of continuing it. Sure, yes, I will second the continuation.
We have a first and a second. Chair, would you like me to take real call? Acosta?
Yes.
Sension?
Yes.
Nada?
Yes.
Beech Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Yes. So. So we made a motion. So at this time, a report from the secretary?
Thank you, Chair. I, I don't have any reports at this, for this particular meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So adjournment. Thank you.